How's it going?
Pouring the snow.
Get your plow out, man.
There you go.
Snow chains on.
Yep.
What's up, homies? How are yous?
How are you doing?
Doing fine. It's snowing out there.
Oh, how are you doing?
And you started that one.
How are you?
I'm all right over there.
He didn't make the meeting.
Why, yeah.
One of these that, uh... It might get beat.
Yeah, it's more snow.
Yeah, but a lot of money combined.
Well, Street looks nice and up with the five.
They did have... Yeah, uh-huh, yeah.
Eighteen minutes.
It's a four that, uh, writes it.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, right, right.
And, yes, yeah.
This will be the first one I just told you to tell them the truth.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, they're all...
Really?
Who wants to know where it's from? Just one. Sure, buddy. They don't like that other. How are you?
I'm doing fine in the clothing area.
You having a good day?
Yes, been good.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and, uh, get the public hearing started. Um, the public hearing is on the food truck ordinance. And I just wanted to see if there's anyone here for any comments.
Surprise!
Just a couple of quick questions. You guys were talking about maybe the rate was gonna be different. Did you modify that?
We had. That wasn't what was voted on, so we could not modify the rate.
But you said something about in between first reading and second reading, you maybe changed that just from...
On consideration of second reading, if the council wants to approve it subject to a rate change, they can do that.
That's when it would happen.
As long as it doesn't change the character of the ordinance itself.
Thank you. And the days are still the same?
Uh, correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments or questions about the food truck ordinance?
Okay, this is the reason that it's A1. I was gonna look back at the people and get their big truck coming back there. Yeah, we were looking for this morning. He was out in the bayou looking hard to get to him. I took a big truck.
At this time, we will conclude the, uh, public hearing on ordinance 2024-11-Nash-1 food truck ordinance. And I'll wait a minute or so, and then we will call the meeting to order.
Oh, yeah, me too.
You got signed up for Medicare and all that good stuff?
No, I already have one. See, I'm still employed and still have a medical insurance. So, my little brother, she told me I didn't need to sign up. Well, I'm called some security. It's no, you didn't need to sign up for it anyway.
Okay, at six o'clock, we're gonna, we're gonna call this meeting to order. And to begin with, uh, we have John C. Hill to open us up in prayer.
And so we're gonna forego it. I'm gonna quickly read this Psalm 106, verse 4. Remember us, O Lord, when you show favor to us, your people. Come to our aid when you save us. So, Father, we thank you this evening, Lord, that you see us, that you know us, that you hear us, Father, and that your grace, your mercy, your favor is pointed towards us and shining upon us on this evening. And, Lord, we pray for your blessings, God. We pray for your wisdom, Lord. We thank you, Jesus, for the opportunity to know you and to serve our city on your behalf. And, Father, we ask that your will be done in this place and in this city. Father, we thank you. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Uh, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the religion for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Please go to the new microphone, please. Pastor Mayor Vail. Alderman Elder.
Here.
Alderman Knightford.
Here.
Alderman Linder.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderman Riddle.
Here.
Alderman Smith, except Pastor May. Okay, at this time, we will open the floor up for any public comments. Oh, yeah, I do need, I do, I do want to approve the minutes. Uh, first, let's see if we have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, can we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. Uh, minutes approved, uh, motion made by Alderman, Alderman Linder, and second by Alderman Riddle. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Now, let's open the floor for any further comments. Okay, moving on. Um, additions or deletions to the agenda? I do have one addition to the agenda, and we have Michael Hayes here to talk to us about a, uh, a lot over by the city park. We're gonna, we will move him to, to new business, um, item number five, if we have a motion to do that.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say it.
Okay. We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? White sign, motion passes. Okay, next on the agenda, we have old business, and we have a second reading on the, um, food truck ordinance.
Good evening. This is the same ordinance that we considered last meeting subject to the change that, um, the council voted on, which is allowing the use of the power boxes at Central Park as an exception to, um, the requirement that food trucks be self-contained under power.
My motion that we pass the ordinance, but I've also got a couple of amendments to go with it. The first one is, as long as the people, the provider has a business license, city and county, I think that's enough. Uh, but they'll have to buy no permit unless they're at a special event, say down at the ballpark or down at the, the park or whatever. Then, uh, also, uh, I'd like to make their days unlimited, let them do what they need to do, and us just basically stay out. Because I'm gonna tell you the reason why. Uh, we've got one registered up on the upper end that's already closed. We've got one in Richmond down there that's supposed to close at the end of the month. I think they're gonna have a hard way to go. If there's two or three vendors there, and we get $400 each, what's a thousand, what hundred dollars gonna do for us? So, I may, myself personally, I think as long as they've got a business license, city and county, uh, they won't need a permit unless they come down to the park or a special event, that type thing, and, uh, let them do their days as they need to. And that's my motion.
A couple of notes on that. The permitting requirement is a fundamental part of, of this ordinance. So, I don't think that is an amendment that can be passed on second reading. It can be passed, and it can be considered, um, a first reading, but it would require another reading and, uh, a public hearing before that could pass as an ordinance. Secondly, what was, uh, unlimited days?
Yes.
That would require a change in the zoning code, um, which is a separate ordinance, because that's, uh, the first Thursday, Friday, uh, first and third, Thursday and Friday of the month was an amendment to, uh, the zoning code, which is a different title and chapter. So, that would require a different ordinance. That's, that's something separate.
Do we need to just have you change it then?
I'm sorry.
Do you need to change it to fit the way we're talking about?
That is a separate ordinance. So, that can't be changed on second reading of, of this ordinance, 'cause, uh, that has nothing to do with this ordinance. The, the days...
Oops. Okay. I, I'm with David. I, I think it should be opened up all the time. And, you know, it, it, it's a, it's not a big deal that I see, and I, I've got a problem with opening it up to... I don't know what's going on with my... Uh, all the time. And I don't know if anybody else has anything different to say about that, but I don't know what, what it takes to get that done, but I'm, I'm in favor of, of doing what David's talking about, having a... For them to come in at all the time. And I know we probably should've done this at some point in time back, according to what we've got to do with all these legal... Sometimes we don't understand the readings when they're, they're set before us, and, uh, I've had a couple of issues with some of the things that we, we passed and didn't understand in its entirety. And, uh, I'm with David with, I don't, I don't, I mean, I, I would like to see everybody have an opportunity to have availability at, at any time they want to sell anything with a food truck, so...
Again, that would require consideration of a, of a, you know, ordinance, because that would be an amendment to Title 11, which is the zoning code. What we are considering now, the food truck ordinance, is adding a chapter to Title 9 of the municipal code, which is separate from the zoning code. And the only reason for that is that the Thursday and Friday, the first and third, uh, Thursday and Friday of the month required is listed in the zoning code and not in, um, this Title 9 amendment that we're considering right now. So, we can do that, but that's a...
So, right now, we're gonna pass that we, we're gonna let them do the, the times that you got specified in this thing. And how do we make an amendment to, if everybody's... I don't know if they are or not. I just don't know. How we, we go there? Would you, how would, would you speak to that?
Well, to clarify, there aren't specific times mentioned in what we're considering right now. That's separate in the zoning code. So, this does not speak to the times. If we want to change the times, we have to change, um, the amendment to the zoning code, which is Title 11 of the municipal code.
Why don't you go up and say your name?
I said, what do you thought it's like about?
I'm gonna agree with y'all, but, I mean, what he's saying, we've got to pass this and have another reading to be able to do that, correct?
Well, it doesn't have to be passed. It could be, uh, voted down. You can vote no on it.
I mean, we gotta vote on it, that's what I'm saying.
It's a separate matter to be considered and voted on.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Anyone can make that motion, but, um, right now, as far as rules and order, what's on the table to be considered is, um, this amendment to Title 9 of the municipal code, which is the food truck ordinance, as amended to permit the use of the power boxes at Central Park. As far as days that food trucks can operate, that's a, a separate code provision that needs to be changed.
So, we're just voting on whether or not the power box is correct?
No, we're voting on passing, um, rules and regulations relative to the use of food trucks in Livingston. There's a long, four or five page ordinance, which you should have in your package, that talks about the requirements for obtaining a, a permit to use a food truck. What's required for that application, that application fee? What happens if the permit, um, is refused? What appeal rights you have? How long the permit is effective for? Rules and regulations with respect to use in parks or other city property, use on private property, storage and discharge of fats, grease, and oils, and the like. Rules and regulations concerning the use of food trucks. And this would add a new, um, chapter to Title 9 of the municipal code that does not exist. So, we're, we're making a law, we're passing a law that will add these provisions to the town's municipal code.
And the only change from last time is adding use of the power at Central Park?
Correct. So, this is the same thing that was considered at the last meeting. The only change being, um, notwithstanding anything in the section of the contract, well, food units... Lawfully operating in Central Park that use the power boxes provided by the town for electrical service, where that will include the unit's self-contained power system.
Is that any con...
No, it's two days a month, isn't it?
No, I'm, I'm talking, if there's not a... Something going on at Central Park, they can pull in down there and use their electricity, is that... No, I'm not part of that.
I thought last meeting, we, we, I don't know if we, if anyone talked about it out loud, um, on using it for special, special functions?
I think that was what we intended last week for. It was to use the power at the Central Park only for special events in the park.
Right, but not just anything?
No, just anything. Is that clear in here?
Then we can specify that if it's not clear. Now, as part of the permitting process, I think, um, it provides that you have to state where you, you plan on, um, on situating your unit and selling food. Now, so if that's Central Park, that doesn't specify only special events, but, uh, you would be issued a permit to operate in Central Park for a period of time.
True. Okay, I'm totally confused. It may just come to darn old. But, all right, if we approve this tonight, then what David is talking about, two things. One, any day, right, David?
Right.
And two, if they have the city and county permits, there'd be no extra trucks, right? Now, if we approve this tonight, and assuming all of us approve of what David is talking about, how do we get that in here? I understand about the zoning. It had to go before them or you or somebody. How do we do that now?
It's just a separate, uh, amendment that has to be considered. So, it's just a, a separate, um, law in the municipal code that has to be changed. All we're doing is adding a, a new section of the municipal code that has all these rules and regulations that talk about food trucks, okay? If we wanna change the days that food trucks are allowed to operate, we have to amend a different section of the town's law. That's it. Now, um, a big part of what we're voting on tonight is whether a permit should be required. This does require a permit to operate a food truck. So, if you're not in agreement with that, then, um, I would not vote for this. But, um, that's a legislative matter for you all to consider. But we can't change that on, an amendment on second reading, because that would change a big, big part of what we're, we're considering. And that has to be, uh, considered twice, go through two readings.
Till we start over?
Correct.
Yep. But in the meantime, we pass what we've got right now, and then we'll work on the other.
Well, for instance, if you want to, um, take away the permit requirement, um, it would make more sense to just vote this down and make a new motion to, um, to consider this without the permit requirement. Because if you pass it, then it becomes law, and then you have to change both.
I would draw my motion. I would draw my motion. You sure, David? Because tonight, we can vote this down and vote on no license. Can't do anything about today.
Well, anyone can, is with all his motion. Anyone else can make another motion. There's no motion on the table right now.
Oh, I realize that, but I'm just saying that David does want to make a motion to not have an additional fee other than the county and the city license fee.
If, if we need to pass this, I mean, I'm, I'll put my motion back up there, but, I mean, I'm just telling my own view of like business license, city and county is enough. And then, I think anybody who wants to come out and work, they would be...
Or if no motion is made at all, unless, then no action is taken, and the, and the law doesn't pass.
You give us more void advice, and I mean, tell me what you want to, I don't care.
Okay. I mean, I mean, I agree with you.
What I'm getting about these little over beds or whatever, they don't make us embarrassed.
But the other deal is using the eli, the city electricity. I mean, I don't care if they use it or not over there, and then, then... What, what were you talking about, Bill, when you said...
I just don't think the city oughta let anyone pull in down there and, uh, use electricity.
No, I'm with you on that. But I, I see what you're saying there, but, but, but if they're not using city electricity, let somebody set up a food truck.
Oh, I don't have a problem.
Right, yeah. That's what, that's what I think he and I are talking about. Let somebody set up a food truck. Don't worry about plugging into our city electric and, uh, and, and using, using that. I just think we need to have somebody, if the Cleveland food trucks here, let them, let, you know, fifteen or twenty of them come in. Why would they need to use it? I mean, I guess there's, there's need for that. They can bring their own generators, and I, I don't know. It's over my head.
Sure.
I think they were talking about using the electricity there in like events where it gets really noisy using the generator, and that was the main reason to allow that to happen.
I don't have a problem with that.
So...
Sure.
Reason I asked for that, we spent, we, being the downtown revitalization committee, about between five and six thousand dollars putting those surfaces in so that there wouldn't be generators running during our events. I guess I didn't realize that, that back in the day, when it was all going on. Been nine years ago. I watched the year later.
So...
Do we have a motion on the floor?
See what stands now, I guess.
Could you clarify what the motion is?
Uh, whatever you read there. Uh, my business license, city and county, you said we couldn't put in there because of, okay, uh, the, uh, permits and, uh, days, you said we couldn't put in there.
The days is a separate, uh, is a separate thing to consider.
Pass what you got on paper right here for second reading. I might, I might pass.
I'll say it.
Okay.
Okay, we have, we have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? White sign, motion passes. Okay, I'll have to say I was very confused about that, too. I had to talk to, to Andre several times to tell me the difference between the zoning and this myself, so, anyway.
Now, we wanna work on getting it opened up at all times.
You can do it. You can make that motion.
Do it right now.
Did you just make the motion?
I made a motion that we open the food truck business to anybody that wants to come in and have a food truck. But now, but not necessarily use our, so, city power.
Unless it's...
Unless it's an event that we're having at...
Central Park.
At the Central Park, right.
Well, is that just changing the number of days? Is that what it's limited to?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, I can prepare where it's, uh, changes the zoning code. All right. To do that.
I made the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table by Bruce Elder, and a second by Lance Ruble, to revisit the zoning ordinance regarding the food trucks to open it up to any day of the week. Correct? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
But now, I got a question on that. But keep it the same time that's in here, nine to nine?
That, that wouldn't change what the council just passed. That's a, a separate factor.
Okay, everybody said, everybody was in favor. Any opposed? Okay, white sign, motion passes.
Fair enough, that's for first reading next meeting.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have Gene Gant, who is going to talk about, um, downtown revitalization, uh, first.
There will be a list of things to talk about tonight. Uh, first, uh, as somebody said a minute ago, I get to tell you all for the first time, tell the truth. Chirp Street is finished. It looked good. Thank you.
We need the stripper down, though, don't we?
I think that's next.
All right.
Yeah, the little polishing kind of be done, but...
It looks good.
I agree.
By and large, it's finished. It's been, uh, a couple of years in the making, and it's turned out to be a very good project. That's a real showplace down to there now. So, beyond that, we'll put that aside. Uh, it wasn't even on your list to talk about, but I wanted to bring it up so I could say it. Uh, the next thing I'm gonna talk about is the, uh, Broad Street and Main Street sidewalks, uh, that T.O.C. multimodal access grant. Uh, the original grant was in the sum of seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, uh, but since that time, uh, the cost of construction has significantly increased, um, with leaving the city with a significant financial shortfall. Uh, and I'm not sure how this happened, but T.O.C. recognized the city dilemma and agreed to grant the city an additional five hundred and twenty-three thousand... and agreed to grant the city an additional five hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty and eighty-seven cents. Those additional funds require, do require local match of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-three cents. And you have a resolution before you tonight authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract amendment with TDOT and accept that additional funding for that 2019 TDOT municipal access, multimodal access grant and committing to the matching funds. And Mayor Burnett will read that here shortly. The next one on my list is the TDOT Transportation Alternatives Grant, Courthouse Plaza. That project is still not approved yet. We have three things we've got to do. Our consultant needs to submit the file-stamped construction documents, which is underway. The city needs to obtain a file environmental permit certification. And we reached out to TDOT Environmental Division awaiting their response on that, on what that maps to. And then finally, the agreement between the city and TDOT needs to be amended to extend the project completion date because we've gone over the timeframe. The TDOT local program folks are working on that document, so we should have that received. The next one is the TDOT Transportation Alternatives Grant, Cedar and Little Streets. On June 6th, the City of Livingston was awarded a TDOT TAP grant in amount of, and that's June 6th, 2023, in the amount of two hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars, with a city match of fifty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine, excluding the cost of design. The city staff met with TDOT virtually last Monday about this grant, and clarification was reached on a few paperwork items that still have to be done. Both the city and TDOT staff were concerned about the cost of construction, have it increased significantly since grant application. And TDOT has agreed to have their engineers visit the project and reevaluate the project cost to make sure. Some of the storm damage, the storm drainage items that we proposed in the TAP grant were by necessity constructed as part of that South Church Street project. So some of it's already been done, actually. The next one I mentioned is the TDOT Traffic Signal Modernization Program around Courthouse Square. We reached out to TDOT to obtain the status of this project, and I've got a little update on that. The state awarded a grant of four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and there's no match to that. That's all state money. It'll cover a hundred percent of the survey, design, construction cost, no local match. The first day of the project will start sometime this year. And then the survey and design plans will get underway in the first quarter of 2025. And then the construction, actual construction will probably occur in the first half of 2026. So again, we're up for a long project that hopefully we'll see completed a couple of years from now. But it's underway, as all projects are. Any questions on any of that? If not, I'll go to the next piece. Ray asked me to report on the TDOT site development credit to the industrial park. The consultant, S and M E, has completed all the initial due diligence. There's a weapons report is complete and it's been submitted. And it's now recommended we do a phase-two environmental assessment. And Tennessee Department of Economic Community Development has agreed and modified its contract with the city accordingly. The mayor signed an amended contract and will have bring to ball a resolution authorizing S and M E to proceed with the additional work from the January meeting. And that again is off my agenda, but something he has to report on. Next, I want to talk about the Christmas in the Country. Our first night was held last Friday. It was a monstrous success. All of the local businesses reported that they had record sales. We had a very large crowd. The weather was awful, but everybody weathered the storm. And that probably helped on some of the local merchant sales because everybody went in to get warmed up, you know? A couple of the stores even had midnight sales, and they reported large groups of people that bought from that twelve to two time frame. And they reported great results with that. So I think it's a super thing. The next night will be next Friday, or the seventh Friday and the sixth. We'll have ponies dressed in Christmas outfits of sorts and pictures taken with the kids, things like that. Of course, Santa Claus will be there. Then on the thirteenth, which is the following Friday, we'll have a snow globe, the world's largest snowman, bounce house, which I'm very excited about. A picking tunnel, roller sledding ride as well. So we have three things up on the square that I think they're all going to be set up on the east side of the square. And that'll be fun for all the kids. And then on the 21st, at the park, I believe, we'll have the jumping gingerbread and Everest climb and slide on the 21st as a separate little program for the children. And I believe that all, there was a mishap from everything.
I think you hit everything that we talked about there. But I think you forgot to say that all the aldermen were required to get into the bounce house.
Oh, I did, I forgot that. Yes, I'm sorry. That was one of the requirements in the contract.
It's really good for backpacking.
The snow globe is one, I think, is you can get your picture made inside of. You can be in part of the stuff. Well, that would be a great picture for all y'all to be in.
What about the mayor? I'd like to comment on the Christmas in the Country. It's the prettiest I've ever seen. Stop does not, Michael, the Brooklyn City employee, is up there working. He said he's trying to make it like Hallmark. He just dropped into it. Prettiest I've ever seen. It's really beautiful. Everybody done a very job.
Thank you. The city employees did a wonderful job. They really did share. The extra trees that we had put out there was a part of the project this year. That actually raised a little money for downtown redevelopment. There was a charge for putting a tree up and sponsoring a tree, and that money went back to downtown redevelopment. So we're starting to see some of that pay off. But those trees really added to it. And when people ask, I see a lot of people ask about, where can I go see Christmas lights? I always tell them, go to the square. That's the best place. But thank you, that is very useful.
It is.
I went to the square today and I think it's probably the prettiest town square anybody's got around Middleton City. It's awesome.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Jim. I'll leave here.
Thanks, Gene, and thanks for your hard work with all of this downtown revitalization and all of the above. And everyone that worked on it, including the merchants and the businesses that brought booze around. I mean, everybody's participated in bringing people in to Livingston. So that's been great. So Ray sent his information to Gene and me, so I am going to read the resolution that Gene was referencing. That'll be next on. This is Resolution 2024, Dash 12, verse 1. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement accepting additional funding for a 2019 TDOT multimodal access grant and committing to the matching funds. I may need to wait till Arno gets back so he can hear the reading. But I'll read it if he asks questions. Here he comes. Whereas on March, on 8th March 2019, the City of Livingston was awarded a multimodal access grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation, TDOT, in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. And whereas said grant was designed for funding of a sidewalk and ADA improvements along sections of East Broad Street and East Main Street. And whereas the cost of construction has increased significantly since the initial grant award linking the City of Livingston with its significant financial shortfall. And whereas through its local programs office, TDOT has recognized the city's dilemma. And whereas, TDOT has offered the city additional funding in the amount of five hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-seven cents, with a city match of twenty-seven thousand dollars, five hundred, twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-three cents. And now, therefore, in consideration of the above, the Board of Mayor and Alderman of the Town of Livingston does hereby resolve as follows. Number one, the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with TDOT for the additional grant funds, grant fund, funds grant in the amount of five hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. Number two, the Board of Mayor and Alderman commits to the grant match in the amount of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-three cents, resolved this second day of December 2024. Do I have a motion to pass the resolution?
First of all, is it in the budget for the city to be able to pay this?
Well.
Can't we afford it?
This will probably be considered in the downtown revitalization budget that we are currently working through based on grant money coming in and reconciling some of the projects that we have for the ground, so.
I make motion to approve.
Okay, motion made by Bruce Elder and second by David Langford. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? White sign, resolution passes.
Gene was about to scold me.
And he's just gonna have to get up and talk.
I'll just go say, yes, we will.
Okay, Shannon was under the weather, so Gene went ahead and spoke on her behalf. So next on the agenda, we have to appoint Beth Geary to the Alcohol Beverage Control Board to replace Jane Ann Officer, who has now become a city employee. So any questions about that appointment?
Motion to approve. Now, second, Beth.
Okay. Motion made by David Langford, second by Bruce Elder. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? White sign, motion passes. Okay, last but not least, we have Michael Hayes. And he is coming up. We have been leasing a property to assist with some parking at City Park, so he's going to tell us about that.
So everybody knows we don't have much parking at Ball Field. So we leased a movie property on Chestnut Street last year, and it worked out really well. We've got six fields over there, and the league keeps drawing every year. So we're in desperate need of that parking. So I would like the Board of Aldermen to approve for us to do the lease again this year, please.
I make the motion to be approved.
I say it.
Okay, that was a motion made by Bruce Elder to approve additional parking and second by Lance Ruble.
And so this is only fifty dollars a month or something?
Well, I think they're wanting to up it to like seventy-five this year.
And we can, like I said, it's Lance who's been there. I know, oh, yeah, I was coming through. We definitely need to park it.
It's across the road where they tore the two houses down. Where.
Apparently, no, you did.
Yeah, movie.
We more would keep it up, you know? So I mean, it's benefit to us. I have to.
I think we got a motion and a second. Any other comments?
Oh, I say. Oh, did we get a second?
We did, we did. Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Michael. Okay, is there any other business?
I've got something I'd like to bring. Probably should have brought it up earlier, but I. Apparently, there's a, we have an ordinance about signs on the railways for like auction signs. And, you know, it's this guy, these guys, it's their livelihood is auctioning and this kind of thing. And to not allow these signs to be put up is kind of, it inhibits their ability to market their properties. And I, we recently had a sale that affected the bank that we had an auction. We didn't have it, the family had it, but it affected the bank's income that came in. And these guys sorely need to advertise the properties. And I don't know where we need to go with this, but, and I know that there's some ordinances that we're fighting against. And that's one of the things I mentioned earlier that I didn't understand, some of these ordinances that have been brought before us and the technicalities of where we're going with these. And apparently, we voted on it to not allow them, which I don't know if our members, not allowing these signs or not, but it's a, it's a pretty big deal for these guys to have these signs up. And I don't know. I just, just a comment or two about, I don't know where to go from here, but if we need to do anything differently or not allow them at all or whatever. But it's, it's been brought to my attention that it's a, you know, it really is a, a big deal for these guys to have their signs up advertising their sales. And I guess I'll just leave it at that just to see if we have any comments about. I haven't heard anything negatively about all the signs. And I'm sure there, there's lots of them up, but it's a, it's a pretty big deal for these guys to have their signs. I know the city of Auburn does not allow them, but I think the city of Auburn does allow them for some reason, but.
Most of them, they're not up for them on a period of time anyways.
Well, they take them down within the 24 hours of the sale. They should, 24 to 48 hours of the sale, and they go down. And I know more go right back up because they've got more sales, but I don't know.
If they advertise their product, then it puts more money in the food.
Whatever, yeah. I don't know.
Now, Bruce, I see their signs. Are they outside the city coke or something? Is that why you're bringing it up?
Just our coach and boarder has told them they can't, they can no longer put them up because of what we apparently passed. I'll let you address this.
Yeah, part of the sign ordinance that the council recently passed says that no signs are allowed in the city right of way unless it's on private property, unless somebody's standing there holding the sign. So it doesn't single out auction signs or real estate signs or anything like that. It just says you can't put signs in this location unless you have a person holding it. Now, that's like what we discussed with food truck permits. That's an ordinance that the council passed, which is a law that the council passed, and the council can change that law if it wants to. Now, it's kind of a long, complicated provision, and we could have a study session, or an attorney-client session, where we go through it one by one, and I can explain it, and we can discuss it, and you all can decide whether it's good the way it is or you'd like to change it. And we can talk about what's legal to do and what's not legal to do. But I'm ashamed of the concern from some people. And if the council thinks it's appropriate to address, we can address that.
I would like to bring something maybe to the Board of Aldermen the next time that might have some language that will be palatable for everyone or at least get it to you, Andre, to let you look at it and see what might work. And then bring it to the board at the next meeting to see if we. the next meeting to see if we can get something marked out on this that would be, something that would be favorable for everyone, that would be, as I said, palatable for, for everyone involved. I don't, I don't really see the problem with them being out there because, as I said, that's their livelihood, and it's a big deal for them to be able to advertise their product. And it's a, and if they get them down within the time specified, I think we can, we can all get along that we, we would, we would be okay with what, what we can bring up.
True. I think that would be a matter of just changing the provision of the sign ordinance that says you can't have temporary signs in the city right of way. And if you want to make that motion, I can prepare that change, and we can consider it next meeting.
So would I make the motion tonight, or...
You make a motion to consider that at the next meeting.
So would I like to make the motion, we consider it at the next meeting then?
So...
Okay, have a motion on the table to consider an alteration to the sign ordinance regarding signs.
For sale and for auction, right?
No.
Any temporary sign.
Any temporary sign or any sign within the, within the city right of way. Or address those provisions, and I will prepare an amendment to that ordinance that I think addresses this.
Would there be a public comment?
Yes, any change, any change in the ordinance is two readings and a...
All right.
If you all agree.
All right, that's got to properly add.
Yes.
Well, auction sign, the auction signs I understood, but now we're going in for sale and auction. Do you realize how many signs from realty companies we would have? It would be overwhelming.
Well, that's what they are right now. I mean, there's, there's...
Well, there's a difference, I think, Bruce, between announcing an auction and having for sale, for sale, for sale.
I concur with you.
Oh, okay.
And I agree with you.
I deserve.
But I don't know if we can discriminate between that or not.
That's right. You can't. Either you allow them there, and you have to allow all signs, or you don't allow them at all. You can't say, well, we'll allow auction signs, but we won't allow for sale signs. You can't do that.
I can, I can bring some language, and we can discuss it at the next meeting, if that's okay with everybody. Will that work?
True.
Okay.
Just take a vote to approve the motion?
Yeah, yes. So we had a first, we had a motion made by Bruce about the sign ordinance and a second by David. All in favor of revisiting this at the next meeting and discussing the amendments, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Black sign, motion passes.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, any other business?
I'd like to ask a question before we do the courthouse. We were talking about Broad Street and the lawn trucks and how sometimes they're sticking out, and Gene, you may not know, Ray may not either, and I know the lawn can be changed, so what if we just took half that sidewalk space when we laid the new sidewalk? In other words, moved over two and a half feet, feet to give us more room on Broad Street, and we could request TDOT to move the center line or something, because the courthouse side of Broad does not have a problem with the trucks. You can't see when you're pulling out, but it is a problem. Tonight, there was a suburban park there, and they went all the way up to the curb, and a car was beside me. I'm still a pretty good driver, so I made it through, but some people wouldn't have. So just something to consider, not about anything that's for everybody to kind of think about what we could do.
Thank you, and just a comment, I have reached out to TDOT about, about, you know, trucks in town and just maybe looking at that and giving us some advice. I mean, that would probably be a lengthy, costly move to add to it at this point and possibly delay it, but that, I don't know that it would have anything to do with courthouse project.
Yeah, it's part of the courthouse project. Before we did anything, if we knew this, it would just be a case of moving, because we're laying each sidewalk anyway.
It's a problem. Every time you come up through there and those things are sticking out, you've got to get over that next lane before you know it, you're going to run into somebody.
Okay, anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn made by Arna, do I have a second?
Two.
Second by Alderman Langford. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Black sign, motion passes.
So, Merry Christmas. That time of year, it's cold outside, really, it's cold on, it's a little outside.
Thank you, Mr. Don Price. You're welcome. Kind of deep, because you're correct.